Okay, let me say good evening to all of you who are here for the council's first meeting in the year 2021, so I'll take a moment to say Happy New Year to you all. Most of the people I talked to seem to be excited that we're leaving 2020 behind and starting a new year, so we can hope for good things to happen, and the town of Garner is, I think, well positioned, hopefully to have a good year. We'll be having some exciting things happening in our parks and wreck areas and other areas too that we'll be working on in the coming days. So, thank you all for being here this evening. We'll begin this evening by asking the town clerk if she will to call a roll.
Mayor Marshburn?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Singleton?
Here.
And Councilmember Vance?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dellinger, maybe I will lead the pledge here, since sometimes there's a little sound delay, I believe, and then we'll call on you for the invocation, okay?
Sounds like a good idea.
If you will, rise if you can and join with me in honoring our country by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. And Councilmember Dellinger, we'll have our invocation at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Lord, for this day. Thank you for this new year and all its promise. Thank you for being with us and our families over the holidays, blessing with help, wisdom, and compassion and love for each other and our neighbors and friends, and be with those who have lost loved ones and comfort them as you do those who are struggling through life's tribulations. Thank you for your guiding hand in the development of these much-needed vaccines. Watch over our first responders and frontline workers who toil in silent, humble duty, serving our community. May they, by your will, get the vaccine soon to protect them and their families, that they may continue their selfless protection of life. Guide us tonight to our highest abilities to carry out our duties to the town and people we love so much in your service, spirit, and name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Dellinger, for that. Okay, we always have an item on our agenda for petitions and comments, it's an opportunity for persons in the public or others who wish to come in and make comments and observations to the council. We usually ask those people to sign up in advance, and I'll ask the clerk this time if she has any persons who signed up and submitted their sign up to you.
No, sir, we didn't have any.
Okay, thank you.
Charger.
Are there others in the congregation, excuse me, in the, yeah, congregation, I guess that's a good term, that wish to speak at this time? If so, if you would just indicate that, I'll recognize you. If you're here for other purposes, we'll certainly recognize you at the proper time. Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move along. I think, Ms. Jones, would it be proper for me just to note briefly that the meeting is being conducted as a remote meeting pursuant to North Carolina Session Statute Law, excuse me, Carolina Session Law 2020-3? And we'll note that Councilmember Dellinger, as most of you can observe, is participating virtually. Whenever he cannot be seen on the screen, he will identify himself by name prior to asking questions and participating in deliberations and making motions proposing amendments and voting. And since this is a remote meeting, we will be voting this evening by roll call on all voting items. Is that correct? Okay, with that being said, council, it is now time to ask you to adopt the agenda, and I'm going to note one item, add-on item at least, that the town manager has already made us aware of, and that would be probably an item to go under New and Old Business as maybe item number four, police recruit classifications. Is that the best way to describe that?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
It is.
So, I'm going to suggest we add that as item four under New and Old Business. Are there any other additions or modifications to the agenda, anyone? Hearing none, and council, with the one notation there, I would ask you for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda with the noted additions.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Okay, motion made and properly seconded. Any other questions, discussions? Hearing none, all in favor of the adoption of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, if there are any, there is no opposition, so the agenda is adopted. Thank you very much. We have tonight at least one presentation that I'm aware of, and I am pleased to be able, I believe, to introduce to you at this time, a gentleman that's known to most of us here, Douglas Ball, who I believe will come up and introduce the item under presentation. So, Mr. Ball, if you'll come forward to either podium, the one in the middle probably is good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Douglas Ball, 1401 Avery Sproul Road, Garner. I'm here before you tonight as a developer of Oak Park Subdivision. Many of you know that I've spent years and years involved with the Wake County Home Builders Association, and one of the organizations that grew out of the Home Builders Association is Operation Coming Home. As I was on the leadership ladder and executive board there, we were able to participate in the operation Coming Home in many cities. There's about three ceremonies. Paul Kane will come up and give you a little bit more detail exactly how this process works, but it was just moving to see the power of these veterans and the recipients of these homes, and it was overwhelming. And to me then, I said, we've got to do that in Garner, and I remember mentioning it to several of you guys. So, I looked back through the file earlier today, and so it was literally as early as 2014 when I was negotiating with Ms. King to buy that property on New Bethel Church Road, and she's a Bryan by family, and I mentioned to her this was something I really wanted to see happen on that property. And she just teared up in my office that day and said, this is just going to be, that meant so much to her, and since then, her husband's passed, and so I can't wait to see this come together and be able to share this moment with her. She had some military in her family, and it was really something special for her heart. It certainly takes a ton of trade partners, it's something I can't do alone, I can womp for it, and in fact, we're giving away an $80,000 lot to kickstart this thing to go forth. But the number of vendors and trade partners, it's just overwhelming, and we're asking that the town be one of our trade partners in this operation. So, I'm going to introduce Paul Kane.
Thank you, thank you, Douglas. Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, council, thank you for letting me speak here tonight. My name is Paul Kane, I'm the CEO for the Home Builders Association of Raleigh-Wake County, and I'm here tonight in my capacity as being a board member of the Operation Coming Home Foundation. Operation Coming Home started in 2008 as an effort to provide new custom homes to members of military who were injured in combat operations. To date, Operation Coming Home has built 22 homes. Most all of them have been in or around Wake County. There's the full gambit of recipients who have received these homes, they always have to be, as I say, have been injured in combat operations. Some are amputees, most all of them have some level of PTSD. In recent years, we've built, started building homes for Gold Star families, in other words, war widows and their children. We just completed Hero Home Number 22 in Knightdale, and that was for a Gold Star family, a lady and her kids. And whether you're talking about helping a veteran who's injured protecting our rights overseas, or a Gold Star family, the emotions run high no matter what. It's a grand effort. Some say, you know, gosh, I don't like the idea of handouts because we are giving the home away. My perspective is, for what they've done for our country, this is just the tip of the iceberg as to what they are truly owed from the community. To make this happen, as Douglas Ball referred to, is everybody participates. Every single vendor, every single supplier, every builder, every developer, they all give, if they're able, they give 100% of their labor or materials. If they're not able to give 100%, it's almost 100%. They give significant discounts. In every community that these homes have been built, we have asked for the community itself to participate in this and to ask for a waiver of the building fees related to it. To date, we have not been told no. That is mild psychological pressure on you. But the idea being that there's three ceremonies that take place, and the first is kind of the surprise reveal to the recipient. They interview with the Operation Coming Home Board, and then we surprise them, letting them know that they are the recipient. This current recipient was surprised live on TV on ABC 11 right before Christmas. And this recipient is Matthew Pelisi. He's a retired Marine. He served for 14 years, four deployments. He was an explosives expert and suffered a lot of kind of percussive-type injury that wasn't easily visible, that kind of repetitive percussive injuries. In fact, the injury that led to his Purple Heart, he was serving in Afghanistan, and one of the explosives went off and it knocked him out. When he came to, he grabbed his gun and went right back in and got shot in the leg. He's a guy that just never knows how to stop. Since retiring, he and his wife have three children, and they told us during the interview that their oldest, who's 10, has lived in eight different places already, and they are eager to have a home, a forever home. And so this will be the first home that Operation Coming Home has built in Garner, and the Pelisi family couldn't be happier to make Garner their forever home, and they're very excited about it. I provided town manager Rodney Dickerson with a letter in December with the details on the home. As Mr. Ball said, it's going to be built in Oak Park Subdivision. It's going to be built by Mattamy Homes, and it's going to be at 125 Belfort Park Circle. So, I'm here tonight to present to you what this project is, what we're doing, and our excitement about building a Hero Home in Garner, North Carolina, and ask that the town waive the municipal fees associated with this home. It's totaling $2,443.75.
Okay, give council a chance to answer questions. One quick one on my behalf, this will show my ignorance, I'm generally aware of your organization. Is this a national organization at all, or is this more?
It is not.
One that exists in the state of North Carolina?
It was locally born out of the Home Builders Association of Raleigh-Wake County. In the mid-2000s, we had a number of our builders who were building for that TV show, Extreme Makeover Home Edition, that was on ABC. And after several of our builders built for ABC, they said, well, we can do this ourselves, and we don't have to be under the production company's thumb. We can do it how we want to do it, and do it for whoever we want to do it for. We had a strong connection with the military. A former employee of the Home Builders Association is a veteran, and in fact, he went on to start a nonprofit group called U.S. Veterans Corps. Operation Coming Home is effectively a partnership between the U.S. Veterans Corps and the Home Builders Association of Raleigh-Wake County, and that's why all the homes have been built, you know, in the triangle. There's been a couple of exceptions, but we don't talk about those, we like to keep them in the triangle. And it's very much a local group benefiting local residents.
Good, thank you. Okay, any council members, I'll start with Mr. Vance, have questions, comments, care to make at this time?
Mr. Kane, and Ms. Ball, thank you for your noble effort. I think it's worthy. You're right, you just never know unless you've been in combat what it's all about and the issues that are incurred because of the post-traumatic stress and other issues and just getting reacquainted with society yourself. I'm a veteran, and I applaud what you're doing.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. I'll recognize Mr. Dellinger if he has a question or a comment.
Just thank you for the work you're doing, and just know that you're always welcome to continue to do this type of work in Garner. There's a lot of veterans in the community, and it's a perfect fit. So, thank you, both of you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Behringer?
Hi. Let me echo my fellow councilmembers' remarks, and thank you for doing this. My father-in-law was a World War II veteran, and he was wounded on Iwo Jima, and they didn't know what they know now, and so some of, it's amazing to me that he recovered as well as he did and went on to be as successful as he did, because there were a lot of things that we now know came from his involvement in the war, so I really appreciate your efforts to help these people make it back into the community and to succeed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kane, for what you and the other builders and homeowners association are doing with this. It's a wonderful project, appreciate you doing it. I don't think you'll have any qualms here with us waiving the fees. As Mr. Vance noted, he's a veteran, Mr. Matthews is a veteran, we've had other councilmembers serving here that were veterans also, I have veterans in my family also, so thank you for doing this. Thanks, Douglas, for you participating also.
Okay, and Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a Vietnam veteran, I've seen a lot of my friends and folks come home in bad ways, and unfortunately, back in those days, there wasn't a whole lot being done for them, but our veterans today, and I've had the pleasure of knowing, the honor of knowing a lot of them, and have participated in some of the Tunnel's Towers home giveaways, and I'm so glad I'm going to do this in Garner. This is very important, it means a whole lot to me and all the veterans out there. And I hope this is the first of many of these we do in Garner, if you guys can put it all together. And it's going to be my honor to really support this project, and can't wait till we take the young man and his family out there and let them have a place of their own, that counts. Thank you for what you're doing.
I might mention, I failed to mention earlier, once the project is going, there will be two official ceremonies, and all of you will be invited. The first is, it takes many forms, sometimes it's a groundbreaking, sometimes if the project's moved along a little bit, it'll be called Raise the Roof Ceremony. Whatever it is, it's kind of an official ceremony that introduces the project to the community and the community to the project. And then the final ceremony is the key ceremony, that'll be taking place sometime in June or July of this year. That's when we really pull out all the stops, we'll have military flyovers, we bring in, you know, either high-ranking military officials, or oftentimes they've had like U.S. senators come in and speak. And of course, all of you will be invited to all of those ceremonies, and we would hope that you could join us.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I also want to recognize Douglas for his good leadership with the Builders Association. You've served on that for a long time, Doug, and I remember, I think the first time I ran for office here, a number of years ago, I appeared before that organization, and I think he asked me several tough questions, but at any rate, I appreciate the work you do there. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kane. So, council, you have before you the request, which is essentially consider approving a waiver of the permitting fees, and you see the amounts that are listed here. Is there any further discussion before we ask for a motion? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to that effect?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the waiver of the permitting fees and the amount of $2,443.75 be granted.
Second. Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any questions? All right, council, I will ask you to vote on the motion at this time. If you favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, you're exactly right. So, Ms. Gibson, if you will at this time, will you call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion passes unanimously? And again, Mr. Kane, we thank you for your able presentation and for the good work you do, and we'll look forward, as this process unfolds, to seeing how it all comes together.
Operation Coming Home and the Pelisi family thanks you all, and we'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you, sir, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, council, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I think you've all probably taken note of that. I believe there's six items on the consent agenda, so are you ready to make a motion of approval? Does anybody have an item they want to have withdrawn from the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Second. Okay, motion properly made, Ms. Singleton, and seconded by Mr. Matthews. So, at this time, we'll call for a roll call on the consent agenda.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Okay, and there is no opposition, so the motion passes again unanimously, and thank you, thank you for that action. Okay, we have one public hearing on our agenda this evening, annexation petition ANX 2020, 105 Shore Drive, and let me see, is Mr. Banford with us virtually to make this? There he is, okay. So, I will recognize you at this time, sir, and open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Dellinger.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'd like to ask the council for recusal on this matter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dellinger, I didn't mean to overlook that. Okay, council is aware of Mr. Dellinger's request for a recusal. I guess we formally vote on that, or?
Yes, it would be appropriate to excuse him from the deliberation and the vote in this matter.
Okay, all right.
I move we excuse Councilman Dellinger from this discussion.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote on this issue.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously, so now I've opened the public hearing, and I will recognize Mr. Banford for the presentation.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, this is an annexation public hearing. I'm going to share my screen. Is my map on the screen?
Yes.
This is Annexation Case 20-20. The property is located at 105 Shore Drive, and this is in a neighborhood off of Buffalo Road, just north of Lake Benson. The property is approximately 2.7 acres. The petitioner is Rebecca Lakey. This is a satellite annexation. The current zoning is residential 20, which is single-family. This is in the, this is Lot 5 in the Lake Shore subdivision, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Banford, for that, okay? Looks like a straightforward issue, but I'll call on council for any questions they might have and/or comments. I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
Yes, Mr. Banford, did we have any responses or questions from people that lived in the neighborhood on Shore Drive, the other property owners regarding this annexation?
We have not had any calls, emails, or inquiries. We did advertise this on the town's legal ad website, and we are also required to publish an ad in the News and Observer, so those two legal requirements were done, and we have not had any inquiries.
Okay, one more question, was the actual address of this property noted on those public postings?
Yes, ma'am, it was.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I'll go to my left to Mr. Singleton for any questions or comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think the one concern I have about this is we're doing a satellite annexation. Usually when we do those, it's because someone has asked to be connected to public water and sewer, because they need either clean drinking water or sanitary sewer. In this case, it's a satellite annexation, that is, I understand it from staff, anyone in the ETJ could ask of this, so that's something we normally wouldn't do unless they're going to connect to water and sewer, because in-town services would have to be extended there, and whether it would be here, or whether it would be somewhere south of here, say in the Panther Ranch community, which is in our ETJ, that's a, would you do that there that you would do here? So, that's a concern I have is, and I've talked to Mr. Dellinger about my concern about that, is you're doing a satellite annexation, which we don't typically do, and that's just a big concern that I have. Someone else came in and asked for this, would we do it? Again, as I say, if they were in Panther Ranch or somewhere else, would you do that? And it's just not something that is typically done without the connection to water and sewer. So, that's a concern that I spoke to him about and had on this issue.
Okay, sure, thank you, Ms. Singleton.
That we're setting a precedent, basically, because we really don't used to do that.
Okay, Mr. Matthews, I recognize you at this time.
I'm going to hold my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll go to Mr. Vance.
Yes, Mr. Banford, have we done a voluntary satellite annexation, to your knowledge?
We have, and those have been for, to connect to public water. In order to connect to public water, a voluntary annexation is required, but a voluntary annexation can be requested without the need for public water. The services that would be provided to this property if annexed would be town trash pickup, in-town parks and wreck fees, and police service.
Okay, and the proximity of this development, the services that you just mentioned are being pretty much provided to those surrounding properties outside of the development?
That is correct. There's a neighborhood directly to the west, that is inside the town limits, and town services, including trash pickup, are provided close by.
And if, and if the applicant requests to be connected to water and sewer, that is relatively close proximity as well, I'm assuming?
Public water is on Buffalo Road. Public sewer is not available in this vicinity at this time. So, if this property were to connect to public water at a future date, then an annexation would not be required at that time if this property is annexed.
But the services are in close proximity to ones mentioned?
Yes.
And would not be?
Public water is close by, yes.
And it would not be a stretch for the services to be rendered? The services such as fire, police, trash?
Yes, yeah, trash, police, parks and wreck fees, those could be provided now. Public water would have to be extended down Shore Drive, and there's no plans to do so at this time, but that's something that could be done in the future.
Okay, now, Mr. Mayor, one more question. Now, with the location of this property, now, I'm going to give a hypothetical, if we had a property that was an individual who was within our ETJ, but yet still, the distance to connect to the services would be a strain on the town. Asking for the same request, would we be looking at that favorably or not? How would we look at that?
That would be looked at on a case-by-case basis, depending on where it is. If it was out, way out in the ETJ, where it was not near any other annexed areas, then it would be a distance to provide trash pickup, police service, if there were- it would be a distance to provide trash pickup, police service, if there were no utilities in the area. So, my opinion is that these would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, and this site is located very near existing town limits. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
You did. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and if I might ask a question myself, I think this would be a reasonable question, have we had any inquiries about any other resident on this one road, street there to inquire about the possibility of connection to water and sewer?
We have had inquiries about connecting to public water.
Okay, to public water, yeah, okay. Okay, I'll go another round with council, if you have other questions, anything from you, Ms. Behringer? Oh, excuse me.
I was going to say, one thing, Mr. Mayor, we might want to clarify that if water is extended to that property or any of the other properties, it would be at the property owner's expense.
Right, okay, yes.
Just want to clarify that.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Manager, okay? Anything else?
I do have one other question, what was the reason for the requested annexation? If they're not interested in connecting to water or sewer, what was the reason for the request?
We can receive a voluntary annexation. I'm not, I'm not, I don't believe a reason was given on the petition.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Singleton, anything else from you?
Just, again, I worry about a person that you said that, you know, we just don't have voluntary annexations, it's just not common, I understand why they were questioned, but it's just not something we commonly do.
Okay, sure, Mr. Matthews, anything?
Is the purchaser, would they consider hooking up to water at this time? And I don't know what the cost of that would be, I'm just offering that out.
Okay, I'll recognize the manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I may let Mr. Hodges answer that, because we have looked into that for one of the parcels further down the street, and so it is a little complicated, but he's been in contact with some of the Raleigh folks.
So, we have a unique situation, that Shore Drive is a private drive, and City of Raleigh will not extend water, even if the, all the owners of Shore Drive agree to pay for the extension without that road being accepted as a public street. So, the neighborhood would have to, in theory, the neighborhood would have to get together and pay for bringing that street up to public street standard, as well as the extension of water, without, for Raleigh to be able to extend the water line unless there was some, some number of homes whose wells failed, and then they would make an exception and extend the water line along or under a, a street that had not been accepted for, to town standards. So it's, it's a bit more complicated than just asking the cost of extending it to, to a house in this particular situation.
Okay? Yes, sir.
And I know one of the homes there has high radon levels in the water, so that property has requested water, but as Mr. Hodges stated, is more complicated than just extending the line.
Yeah.
We do believe that particular homeowner has been offered a remediation plan by Wake County, so at this time, Wake County has not told us that there is a compelling public health need to extend the water.
And I don't know if we're talking about the same person, because I don't know their names, but, but I did have a resident on that street approach me while I was jogging at the park, I believe, and made some brief inquiry about that, but I haven't heard from them since then. Okay, let's see, Mr. Matthews, you still have the floor, but?
I was just curious if that was a possibility, or what, what the issues were concerning that, and so, the person with the radon issues, I know, having served county level before, we've had to deal with, had to deal with those type of issues, and I don't know how fast they would move on something like that, unless his well is just totally shut down, where they could not use it.
Yeah, like I said, the report that we were forwarded by the, the person, the water connection seemed to have suggested plan by Wake County that they could follow, but not compelled to have, to have to, to seek public water.
Okay, thank you, John, anything else? Okay, council, we've been around here, I don't think there's anybody in the audience who is here to speak to this issue, Mr. Williams, no? Okay, okay, can't see who that is back there, but anyway. Okay, council, the request here is to consider adopting ordinance 2021-5004, which is to extend the corporate limits of the Town of Garner to this area and approve this annexation. I will entertain a motion at this time, unless there's other comments to be made. You finish, Mr. Vance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everybody's head there, go, okay? All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question here at this time?
Yes, go ahead.
Might be a little bit, I wonder if the purchaser would consider pulling this at this time to find out if possibly this other person is, with that well, where they would have to have water down that, be a part of it, if they didn't consider pulling this at this time to research that or see what's going to happen with it, so water would be provided.
Okay, I don't know that, that person is available here this evening, but go ahead, John.
I don't believe that there is any, any likely possibility that water is going to be extended.
Okay.
It would take a fairly substantial and expensive action, not everyone that lives on Shore Drive, so just as a staff observation, I would just say that you may just want to consider that it would not be one other person being involved, it would take likely the involvement of everyone who lived on Shore Drive coming together and committed a pocket for some improvements before there would be any chance of water being used.
Okay, thank you. Okay, answer your question, okay?
Let me throw a motion out here for us to consider, I move that we table this item to our next meeting, which will be Tuesday, January the 19th, for the discussion then.
Second.
Second.
Okay, motion to table until Tuesday, the 19th, meeting has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on that issue? Okay, hearing done, we'll vote on the motion to table. Do we have to reopen the public hearing if we do it this way, does that matter? My attorney?
I guess you could clarify whether you're going to close the public hearing and then deliberate and vote on it at the next meeting, or whether you want to continue the public hearing?
I will continue the public hearing, and then we'll, continue the public hearing to the next meeting in January, January the 19th.
It does call for a vote, though, right?
Yes, it calls for a roll call vote.
Roll call to continue, so, okay, Ms. Clerk, if you will, call the roll.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger? Oh, I'm sorry. And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, so the vote of the council is to continue the hearing until the, what was the date, Greg? Tuesday?
January 19th.
January the 19th, yeah.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, pursuant to session law 2020-3, written comments may be received up to 24 hours after the public hearing. Because you've continued the public hearing, written comments can be received up until the 19th, and perhaps the 20th of January as well.
Okay, thank you.
And those written comments should be submitted by email to s gibson at garnernc.gov.
Thank you, thank you, so that is so noted. All right, so the council has voted, that is the action we will take, we'll continue this matter, and Mr. Manager, if you will, make sure we get that on the agenda for that Tuesday meeting, okay?
I will, I will.
Okay, thank you, thank you, council. We will now move to the item on the agenda under new and old business, and item number one, we will hear from Mr. Bowie, I believe, this, we've already had a hearing on this matter, so this matter is ripe for approval this evening, I believe, isn't that correct? So, Mr. Bowie, if you're there, we will recognize you at this time, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council.
Can you turn on your video, or?
Yes, sir, if you. Can you hear me, sir?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, all right, yes, sir.
We'd like for him to turn on his video as well, right?
Do you have video, Mr. Bowie?
Yes.
Are you prepared to share your?
I turned the camera on.
There we go.
There we are.
All right, you can, okay.
We can, can you, can you back away from your screen just slightly, so we have more of a facial view? There you go, thank you, Mr. Bowie, that's better.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
If you give me just one moment, I'm trying to get my information, if it's on my computer, but I don't want, I want you guys to be able to see it.
Okay.
Can you see that, his staff report?
Not yet.
Okay. You'll need to hit the share screen function in Teams. I didn't, but for some reason, my, the information I want to present is not on the screen, it's not showing.
I've got it up on my screen, I'll go ahead and share it, Reggie.
Okay. If you can hear me, then I will, I will begin.
Oh, yeah, there's no problem with the audio. Jeff, did you say you were going to, yeah, okay, well?
That's what's included in our package, is that correct, Reggie and Jeff? This is the memo?
Yes, it's in your packet.
Okay, yes, sir, okay, good.
The first text amendment is UDO 20-03 residential solar panels, and for the sake of time, I will not go through the current ordinance or the proposed take order by the applicant, I'm going to skip down to item number four, proposed language by staff.
Okay.
5.4 accessory uses and structures, K accessory, solar energy system, 1, all voting different. Generally, solar panels shall not create glare that constitutes a traffic safety hazard or nuisance to neighboring properties, as such, they shall, 1, be arranged, angled, or sighted to minimize glare or reflection on adjoining properties and rights away, and 2, have a textured or anti-reflective surface or coating, mirrors or mirror panels are prohibited. B, additional regulation for ground mounted panel and related equipment associated with residential uses. 1, the maximum height and maximum tilt is eight feet. 2, the area should not exceed 25% of the principal residential building's footprint, not total square footage. 3, location is restricted to the interior side and rear yards only, and should not encroach to any perimeter buffer required by section 7.1 K6, purple with charts. 4, minimum setbacks shall meet those specified for accessory structures, however, the area should not count towards any accessory structure allowances, and 5, views from street right away and adjacent partials shall be at least 50% screened to a height of eight feet. 3, non-residential uses and CBDs on the district, only flush mounted solar roof panels or solar shingles are permitted. The recommendation, the town council conducted a public hearing on November 17th, 2020, on this proposed amendment, there were no comments from the public. The applicant had previously presented information to the council at a work session in advance of the public hearing for discussion purposes. Council reflects concern about allowing ground mounted solar panels for commercial uses in the downtown CBDs on the district. This concern is reflected in staff's ordinance draft. Council closed the hearing and referred the matter to the planning commission for review and recommendation at the meeting on December 21st. Staff recommends approval of UDO text amendment, UDO 20-03, as presented in section 4 of this report entitled Proposed Language by Staff. Are there any questions for me at this time?
I'll go to council just a minute, do you care to comment, the planning commission did consider this as noted on the 21st, is that right? I guess, and the action they took is noted there under item 5 on the screen, is that right, Reggie?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, council, I'll start with Mr. Dellinger, if he has questions.
I have one question on the definition of residential, if that includes mixed use, does it include multifamily residential, or is it blanket, or is it really catered toward single-family? Because I look at the statute, and it says no person, I know that can be a corporation, but I just didn't know if it's blanket all residential, or if it's just really meant for addressing a single-family.
I believe that is just blanket residential use.
Okay. That's all the question I have at this time.
Thank you, sir, I'll go to, to Mr. Matthews.
No questions, Mr. Thomas Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
And just to confirm, what we are voting on is the proposed language by staff, y'all have tweaked this over time, and comments from the planning commission, and you have tweaked it from what was originally proposed, that you feel comfortable with, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Ms. Behringer?
No, sir, no questions.
Okay, so if there are no other questions of Mr. Bowie this time, does, do you have Mr. Coon, who wants to, Coons who wants to give comments?
I believe he is present, sir.
Okay, Mr. Coons, I know you were here when this was presented, we will hear from you if you have observations or comments.
I don't have any comments.
Okay, all right, hearing done, of course, our, our planning director is, is here with us as well, but if there are no other comments, I'll, I'll call, and the, the request is to approve ordinance 2021-5005, which contains all the updated language, I believe, that Mr. Singleton asked Mr. Bowie about.
Agreed.
Okay, are you ready for a motion on this item?
I move we approve ordinance 2021-5005 to amend the UDO to further allow ground mounted solar systems for residential uses.
Second.
Okay, thank you, motion properly made by Councilmember Singleton and seconded by Councilmember Behringer. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Hearing done, Ms. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, so the motion passes unanimously, and is approved ordinance 2021-500, is it 5? Yes, 5005. Okay, thank you, I believe that's all for that item. And thank you, Mr. Bowie and Mr. Coon, for your, for your time on this, all right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next item under new and old business is item two, UDO 2005 Town Homes and Indoor Entertainment in the CBD. This is Mr. Trezenberg, our planning director. Recognize you, sir.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This item is also coming back to you for consideration of action. And just as a reminder, there are two parts to this particular amendment package. I'm not going to go through this all in detail, but do just kind of want to focus on some of the things that have been discussed from the public hearing, as well as going to the planning commission. So again, this is just an amendment, both parts of which are only applicable to the central business district zone. And I'm going to bring this map back up again for you. And so I know I contributed to a little bit of the confusion last time by saying that I thought townhomes were allowed in the R9 district when they're not. So just want to revisit that for a moment to note that in the downtown area, the townhouse, the townhouse use is already permitted in the CBD district, which is shown in purple. There's also some community retail zoned land in that general vicinity, and you'll see that in light red. Townhouses are also permitted use there. And then finally, the ONI district in the downtown area, there's a few random parcels that you'll see in blue. Townhouse use is a permitted use there. So we have been approached by some folks who are interested in doing some townhomes in the downtown area. And regardless of this text amendment, we anticipate that project coming forward to you. The question will be what the design and fit of those townhouses on those lot proposals will be. So when staff was pondering this, the CBD district, I don't think it always had a good, didn't always fit really well with the rest of the ordinance. For instance, we've run into issues with applying the landscaping ordinance downtown. There's just various things about it that aren't probably quite how we would like. And I will say that we are working through a lot of those issues and will be continuing to work through those issues as part of the UDO steering committee. But one of them that came about, regardless of whether townhouses should be a permitted use in the central business district, we just focused on the fact that they are in allowed use at this time. And so what, if they are allowed, what should they look like? And so the text amendment before you tonight, the portion of it that deals with townhouses in the central business district, provide the flexibility to bring those townhomes up closer to the public street, and therefore gives it more of a feel that's consistent with the business district. Otherwise, townhomes in these districts have a very large front yard setback that is more typical of a suburban feel. And after looking at the, the plans that we have adopted with the comprehensive plan and the focus area on downtown, we felt that this was a good package to bring forward to you to, to allow for that more urban feel townhome to be, to be added to the downtown area. So in previous meetings, we went over the exact text changes that would be required to have that happen, to bring about the kind of look that we showed in these examples. There were a few just clarification questions at planning commission, but nothing that prompted any changes to our staff recommendation. The second half of the package dealt with what staff has basically looked at as a, an oversight, a miss, or a gap that needs to be filled. And that is for the indoor entertainment facility use. Currently, in the UDO, indoor private sports facilities, like indoor tennis courts and things like that are already allowed. And there are other indoor uses, such as indoor manufacturing, that are allowed. Recently, we did a text amendment that outdoor entertainment is permissible with a special use permit. So when we looked at this, we were debating whether it should be somewhere in between those kinds of uses as to how it should be permitted in the CBD. We opted for permitted with standards. So I think, you know, there could be some room for discussion as to whether it should be permitted with standards, like indoor tennis courts and indoor manufacturing, or whether it should be a special use permit, like outdoor entertainment. Our initial, our initial recommendation is that it's closer to the other indoor uses, so we would default typically to just permitted with standards. So that is the continued recommendation from us here tonight. Planning commission did unanimously recommend approval of this particular text amendment, and staff does as well. And that's all I have to present at this time. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have, or hopefully provide some clarification.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Trezenberg, counsel. Questions for Mr. Trezenberg? I'll start with Mr. Matthews.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I remember the original presentation, and I know we went in great deal of depth on this thing, and I think this is going to be a great opportunity for that entire area down there. And I think it's going to truly set a trend in the growth down that way, and people moving in and investing in that area, both on the homes as well as the indoor entertainment. And, and the presentation's good, and y'all have answered all the questions we have. And I do urge my fellow members to support this. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for the historic downtown district down there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Vance?
No, I have no questions at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Singleton?
I concur with what Mr. Matthews stated.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger?
Just for clarification on the townhome change, what we're proposing is that the yards can be reduced to five feet. And then is that five feet measured from, from what?
From the property line.
So where do, where do the sidewalks go?
Right. So the sidewalks go in the right of way. So typically, I would say the back of the sidewalk to the property line is anywhere from a half a foot to five feet, just depending on where, the particular location, how it, how it works.
And do we have any requirements in our UDO presently for requiring porches on this type of property?
So that's where, that's where I recommend, and we've been talking with folks about this, that as part of the rezoning process, we do look at those types of, of conditions and talk about them. We can't require them per, per the state law, but we can talk about them and, and see what's appropriate. And so to date, what we have discussed with, at a staff level with applicants, is to provide, provide conditions that really address some kind of separation between the public space of the sidewalk and the private outdoor space of the porch to the home. And so other regulations that I'm familiar with that address that type of thing either require that the porch be raised to create some vertical separation, or that you do, or you require things like a fenced-in front yard to create that physical separation. Because you do want to respect the, to the public and the private space.
So I guess, how was it clear? So townhomes don't fall under the category of, they fall in the category of single-family homes? I know we can regulate multifamily and multi-unit up to like three or more. This doesn't fall under that category, or it does it?
It can. It, it can if the townhomes are, are over a certain quantity. So if there's, as I understand it, if there's over a certain number of them grouped together, you may be able to. But the rule for the, is related to, they tie it to the building code definition of a one or two family dwelling, and that's where it gets a little fuzzy for me, because they define those things differently than planners do. But as I understand it, if it's three or more units together, we can. But if they do have some units that are just in pairs, that we can't. But, but either way, either way, we do want to talk about that and come to, come to agreement on that with, with individual applicants.
Do you think there's space in this particular request for that? Because one of the things that happens is you, when you lose porches, you lose that connection, that community connection where people can sit and see people walk by, and you end up with, you know, back load, garages are fine, but it doesn't create that sense of community that porches create. So requiring a porch with a small setback, if you're going to decrease that setback, you know, you don't have a yard where people can hang out in. So I have a lot of concerns really about community, building community in downtown, when you don't have that type of social connecting place. And if we can require it, it's, it's a feature that is actually very strong, I think. And I'm, I'm afraid of, there are some projects I've seen in Raleigh off of, near Buck Joe's Road, their student housing, but they're just flat-faced, you know, townhomes. There's no, there's a door, there's nothing else. And I'm just, if we have the ability to sort of incorporate those community aspects into it while still permitting that short setback, I think it's, it really provides a great opportunity for us to do something. But, but I'll let others, others speak on.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll go to this side of the, I guess, Mr. Vance?
I have no questions.
Okay.
It was clear.
And Ms. Behringer? I don't believe I'll give you...
Yes, just a curiosity question, Mr. Trezenberg. The original North Garner plan, I believe we adopted that 12, 14 years ago?
Yeah.
A while back. But was there, am I remembering correctly that there were townhomes recommended in that plan in North Garner? Or am I dreaming that one?
I honestly could not answer that for you without having looked at it again, unless Mr. Bamford, who's on the line, has a, has a good, a good memory and can recall that specifically.
I seem to remember that there were some, so I was just pointing out that there is still that connection with the original vision. That's all.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Trezenberg, from anybody? Here? Okay, Mr. Matthews?
Just, just one, Jeff. You had mentioned on that between the sidewalk and for the house, the possibility of fencing. You know, from the pictures we were presenting and all, I didn't see any type of fencing. And I think that would be a big detractor from what this whole presentation is all about, which is really a great area for people to walk, as well as talk to their neighbors on their, their porches and what have you. So I think if fencing is in there somewhat, that would definitely take away from that. I like what was originally presented. I think it's a good, good community. Just my comments on it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Singleton, anything else?
No, sir.
Let's see, Jeff, you were the only presenter on this, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, counsel, are you ready? Are you ready to vote on this issue? Okay. A call for a motion, I believe, is requested to consider adopting ordinance 2021-5006 as a matter that should come before us. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 2021-5006.
Okay. Okay, motion properly made and seconded. Any other questions before we vote? Hearing none?
One more que...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry.
Quickly?
Yeah, one, just one quick question for Mr. Trezenberg on the UDO rewrite. It's, we're at the stage now, can we try to look at that next time? That's kind of specific language around some of that, front-facing and stuff like that? I mean, not for this, but for future projects?
Right. Yes, I would say so. I think we, we want to have that discussion about townhomes just generally, all throughout town. So yes, I have that on my list for us to talk about it within this more urban context as well. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gibson, could you call the roll for a vote on this?
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
And Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, counsel, and thank you, Mr. Trezenberg, for the presentation. The motion passes unanimously, so it is approved. All right, we'll go to, to the last item under this section, which is, well, there's actually one more after this one. Item three, UDO 2004 telecom towers setback radius. And we've certainly heard previous information on this. Mr. Bowie, I believe you are back with us presenting on this item. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I would ask that if Mr. Trezenberg would please pull up the staff report for me, I will read it on my end.
Okay, and you may want, I don't know if you, well, maybe it doesn't matter. He's going to have it on the screen if he wants to activate his video.
Does he have it up yet?
Not yet. Okay.
Yeah. I have it up on section four.
Okay, are we ready for Mr. Bowie now?
Okay, I'm having one other issue with my camera. It will not turn on now for some reason.
Okay. Well, we can hear you fine, so...
Yeah, we don't need it if he's got the presentation up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'm ready. This case is text amendment for UDO 20-04 telecommunication tower setback radius. And I will scroll down to number four, proposed language by staff. Article 5.3, use regulations, B, 8, C, 7, 7 setbacks, A, minimum setbacks. A setback radius as measured from the center of the tower base shall be required as follows for the, for all cell towers, except for those located in the R40 district. See subsection 15 below as follows. Adjacent lock type, setback notes. Developed residential district, setback 200 feet from property line. Undeveloped residential district, 100% tower height. Non-residential districts, 60% tower height or 110% BMD. See subsection D, 110, 110% DMB may not be less than the minimum side or rear yard on the district setback. And DMB stands for break point minimum. B, the town council may allow the setback adjacent. C, break point design technology is defined as the engineering design of your tower wherein a specified point on the tower is designed such that with structural failure, the failure will occur at the break point rather than at the base plate, ankle bolts, or any other point on the tower. Certification by a registered professional engineer licensed by the state of North Carolina of the break point design and the design's fall radius must be provided together with the other information required herein from an applicant. D, the town council may require that its tower setback radius not contain any building, structure, or land uses if the council concludes that such building, structures, or land uses could be impacted by the structural failure of the tower. Recommendation, the town council conducted a public hearing on December 7, 2020 for public comment on this proposed amendment. There were no comments from the public. The applicant had previously presented information to the council at two work sessions in advance of the public hearing for discussion purposes. Planning commission recommended approval at their meeting on December 21, 2020. Staff recommends approval of UDO 20-04 as restated and reorganized in section four of this report. Does the council have any questions for me at this point?
Okay, counsel, I won't necessarily go individually, but are there questions for Mr. Bowie? None here, none here? Here. Singleton?
Question for staff is, we've had a couple of presentations by the applicant and then their suggestions for text change, and then staff has tweaked these a couple of times also. I'll admit, I've been reading through this again and again and again, I still think this gets approved and it becomes effective immediately or tomorrow, whenever it is, that in the next month, we're going to have five or six people apply for cell towers, and I'm going to wonder if we know what we're doing, if we did the right thing. Staff, you know, in reading this, I just wondered a couple of places, it says, you may require a radius not containing any buildings if you conclude that the buildings could be impacted by the structural failure. It says may. I mean, may. I mean, if a tower falls, there's a building in the way, and it falls on it, it's going to knock it down some. I just read this, and I think, well, it says you may do it, and it says you may do that. We may allow the setback adjacent to undeveloped residential to be reduced to 60%. Do we all, I mean, and looking at what other towns have done, is may a way that we should do it, or we should be more firm in saying, this is the way it is? That's just a concern I have. I mean, we have the variable in here that we may do this, and we may do that, while we may make a mistake and screw up by doing that. I don't know.
Sure.
I would prefer to Jeff on that question.
Sure. So when it came to the council's discretion, we really didn't touch or play with that language. So I believe, to my knowledge, the language that you're referring to is currently in the ordinance. I do know that particularly that language about requiring a setback to not have structures in it, or that you may have that option, that already exists today. So I don't think we or the applicant really intended to, to play a whole lot with that. We wanted to reserve that right for you so as not to make a really drastic change. Because we do recognize, and I think from staff's perspective, we recognize that you kind of do want to be able to look at this on a case-by-case basis as we go forward so that we're not, you know, making a huge change that all of a sudden we realize we're completely uncomfortable with. I would say that the recommendation as far as the setbacks that are absolutely required, we are comfortable with as staff, and that really it puts the discretion, or keeps the discretion in your, in your court to allow reductions if you're comfortable with it, and the people, in some cases, the people in the neighborhood or surrounding properties are comfortable with it as well.
Okay. And as in previous, I know we're doing a UDO rewrite, but there were still for each individual tire request, over a certain height, it has to come before the council's, that's correct, right?
That's correct. Yes, if it's over, I think, 35 feet in height, that's a special use permit.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. Mr. Matthews, I give you a chance. Okay. Okay. If there are not any further questions for Mr. Trezenberg, is, is it anticipated that, I believe it's Mr. Herrick, was, was, was he scheduled to make any presentation?
I think Mr. Dellinger. Raise his hand, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Dellinger, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I did one question. There seems to be a new part of the ordinance related to objection by adjacent affected properties, and it says the setback can be reduced and that affected owner of recorded adjacent to reduced setback distance provide written documentation that they do not object to such setback reduction. What is the form of that written documentation? Is that just the, you know, cell tower person saying, oh, we talked to John, he said it's okay? Or is this like a notarized statement? Or what is the form of this, this written objection or non-objection?
So I may have to ask the applicant to chime in if that, I can't recall specifically if that was something that they proposed, or if that was already in the ordinance.
I don't believe it was in the original ordinance. It was in the proposed amendment by the applicant, and then it's in, let's see, wait a minute. Yeah, it's actually in both. So I guess my question is, what is, what is this, what is the form of the written documentation?
Okay. Being that I've not dealt with this firsthand before, I would, my first reaction would be is that it would need to be some kind of notarized document. I think at this point, I would say that we would get with the town attorney to determine exactly what that form should be. We wouldn't just accept anything. But there is no, there is no preset form for that that I'm aware of today.
I think it might be good to get with the town attorney to come up with some type of disclosure form that needs to be notarized so it outlines that they don't have to do it, or that they've been informed as to what all their rights are under the UDO. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Okay. Counsel, are you satisfied with your questions, comments, anybody? Okay. Anything else, Jeff?
No, sir, not on my end.
Okay. I believe we are ready for a motion to consider adopting the ordinance 2021-5007, I believe it is. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve of ordinance 2021-5007.
Thank you. Motion made. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Properly seconded by Ms. Behringer. So I'll call for a roll call vote at this time. Ms. Gibson?
Mr. Mayor, sorry. I'd like, I'd like to amend the motion to include a notarized disclosure that the attorney will draft for us.
All right. Mr. Vance, you made the initial motion. Do you have any opposition to amending the motion to that effect?
I have no issue with it. And to add, what is to be added?
A property, adjacent property owner disclosure form that they don't object, and would that be notarized?
Adjacent? Okay.
A notarized form. Okay.
Okay.
You still good with the motion with that, with that slight amendment?
Yes. Am I ready?
Okay.
Do I have to restate, do I have to restate, or is it good to go?
I don't think we need to restate it. Does the staff, excuse me, does the council need clarification on that? The amendment? Okay. All right. We'll ask for the roll call vote, Ms. Gibson.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay. And Ms. Gibson, you were able to get the wording on the amendment, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So the motion passes and is approved. Thank you all very much. And Mr., is it Herrick? Did I say that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. All right. We'll move along to item three. Excuse me, we just approved item three, I'm sorry. The add-on item is item four. We talked about this as an add-on to the, to the agenda, and I'm going to recognize a town manager for presentation on this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. I believe Budget Manager Michael Franks is going to cover this item.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
He's on with us.
Okay.
I'm not sure if my mic's on.
I believe it is. Mr. Franks, if you're there, we'll look to see you and recognize you at this point in time.
Yeah, hello, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The police department, in the memo I sent you summarized the fact that they performed a review of basically how other localities handle their recruits when they're in the training period, the BLET period, which is a 16-week period that the town of Garner requires. And as you can see in the chart that I added in the summary, Garner was significantly lower than a lot of the other localities, given the challenges the police department has with recruitment, and it's just the kind of competitive nature. Staff in the police department felt that it was a worthy thought to reclassify that position from its current grade up to 22 in the civilian rank structure, which would allow the police department to increase the initial salary and make that position more competitive. And given the fact that we think there are approximately threes police recruits annually, and that number will fluctuate, the financial impact would be about $20,000 annually, but we think that'd be well worth it, given the impact it would have.
Okay, sir. Counsel, questions for Mr. Franks on this issue? Mr. Vance, anything?
Questions?
Okay. Ms. Behringer?
No.
Okay. Here.
So we're just simply being asked to change the salary grade for the police recruits from salary grade 11 to salary grade 22.
That's correct. Okay.
That would affect basically the 16 weeks that they're in UDO P, and then at such time they're added on to the department, they would get the regular starting salary for police officers.
Okay. Okay. Thanks, sir. Mr. Matthews?
I think it'd be a good recruitment tool, and especially with these challenging times, and I would support it.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Franks? That, I think that's all the questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, counsel, call for a motion on the, on the request for this reclassification.
Mayor, I move that we approve the reclassification request from salary grade 11 to salary grade 22 as proposed by staff.
Okay. Motion made and properly seconded. Any other questions? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll for a vote on this matter, please?
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay. Motion is approved, and it's so ordered. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Franks. I believe that covers all of the regular agenda items. I am now down to item J, committee reports, counsel. If you're ready to move along, we will, I think, not take a recess just yet, and go forward with any committee reports at this time? Are there any? Okay. Hearing none. The manager, I know, has at least one or two, maybe three items, so I'll recognize him at this time.
Yes, Mayor, Town Council, there's a handful of Garner info items we're continuing to work on there. And then also, we have the Capitol Project Report, and Chris Johnson, Town Engineer, is here. Have any questions about any of the items that are on the list there? We've got, we have a long list in red, that's the, is it not on? Okay. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I was pushing a button. I thought I needed to push the button. There's a list of items pertaining to the streets that would add it for the next resurfacing, so they're blank, and then it goes from there with the current update on the projects that are in process. So Mr. Johnson can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Counsel or Mr. Johnson, do you want to make any comment initially, or just, you're available for questions?
I was just going to give a very brief highlight of some of the highlighted items we had in this quarter. Good evening, counsel. The major project that we've had going on over the last few months in construction has been New Rand Road widening. Just to give you an update on that, when water and sanitary sewer is complete, and storm drainage work is in progress on the north side of US 70, we're hoping to see curb and paving begin later this month on that section of New Rand. The June Sausage Road project, this is the new project that will begin where the Amazon project recently ended and extend improvements down to Garner Road. That contract has been executed, and we are going to have our design kickoff meeting next week with the consultant. Sidewalk projects, Vandoor Springs Sidewalk, land acquisition is in progress. We've met with multiple owners out there to go over some of the easements that will be required for that project. As you know, Timber Drive Sidewalk, construction is complete. DOT just accepted all of the improvements for the three pedestrian crossings that we added to that, I'm sorry, that was on the other sidewalk project, excuse me. But the project is only being closed out at this point and just getting the federal reimbursements submitted. But the three pedestrian crossings are complete. We're also starting to make some headway on the Garner Police Department improvements. We've got quotes in hand for the step repairs that are going to be made, so we'll be analyzing that, bringing something to you in the near future. And we're also obtaining bids or some quotes for removal of the bioretention media and replacement to fix the bioretention area. We've actually completed two of the four smaller stormwater projects, the Meadow Brook Casin and Stunt Meadows projects are both complete, and the other two larger-scale projects are in the CIP in future years. We've also just added our 2021 resurfacing contract to this quarter, so that actually just advertised today, and we are expecting bids to be opened in early February. And then from DOT standpoint, both I-40 and NC-40 projects continue to progress. The New Bethel Church Bridge project, just wanted to let you know, this was not shown on your report, but did get word that it looks like construction on that project. Completion will probably be pushed back to around mid-June. As you remember, there were some delays at the onset of that project related to utility relocations, and I think that's just sort of carried over into the winter. And then the NCDOT resurfacing, Greenfield Parkway, and then two subdivision streets that are in Garner ETJ have all been let, and they are all slated to be completed by the end of the year. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Good report. Ms. Behringer, any questions?
Yeah, just wondered if next time you give us a report, Chris, it's always thorough, but could you supply a magnifying glass to go with it?
I'll see what I can do to try to make it larger.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, thank you for the update, Chris. It's good to always get this every quarter. The Vandoor Springs Sidewalk from Timber Drive down toward the Tiffany Wood subdivision, that is still on schedule to be completed sometime later in probably the fall of this year, correct?
It'll probably be late this year. It's really going to come down to how quickly the rest of the land acquisition can be completed. It'll certainly start this year. Completion will probably be late in the year, and if, I guess, worst case, right now, we would, if weather does not work with us, it could lead into the early of the following year. But we're still, right now, we feel that we can still complete it this year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good.
It'll probably be late this year. It's really going to come down to how quickly the rest of the land acquisition can be completed. It'll certainly start this year. Completion will probably be late in the year, and if, I guess, worst case right now, we would, if weather does not work with us, it could lead into the early of the following year. But we're still, right now, we feel that we can still complete it this year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good. Matthews, Mr. Dellinger?
No, my question was about Vandora Springs as well, so I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Vance?
Well, yes, just in reference to the New Rand Road project with the utility relocations, was that was that a, did that cause a delay in completion of the project?
Are you referring to New Rand Road or New Bethel Church?
New Rand.
Okay, on New Rand, we did have some utility delays at the very start of the project back in 2019, and that did delay the starting date of construction. So we basically delayed the notice to proceed on New Rand Road. So at this time, the contractor is currently on schedule. The only issue that I'm seeing right now with it is just the time of year. Obviously, we're getting into the coldest and wettest months of the year, and if that causes problems with them during paving process, then we could see some minor delays over the next month or so.
Yeah, I understand that we have issues with utilities on New Bethel Church Road as well, just getting the coordination and everything to get that relocated. That was caused a delay in the project.
Yeah, I think that was a change in the utility plans based on some issues. I'm not really familiar with that one because it's a DOT project. But yes, they delayed the, it's kind of a similar situation. They had to delay the start of construction for the bridge relocation.
Is there any way that we possibly can, I guess, be proactive when it comes to Joan Sausage Road, since we're in the early planning stages, to possibly look at potential utility issues that may delay once we get started? Could we be forward-thinking on that to try to minimize any delays that we see that we're currently having with utilities?
Yes, that is our plan, sir.
All right, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Vance, okay? All right. Anything else for Mr. Johnson? Okay. Mr. Manager, I'm back to you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
All right, only other thing I have is I sent you some information earlier today just to have a discussion about recommendation I have going forward for the next few weeks to the end of January as it concerns COVID and the way the cases are rising, you know, in North Carolina, Wake County, all over the nation, and my concern about how it's affecting our staff and the number of cases that we've had internally. And, you know, can't really say for sure, but we believe most of those probably came from outside sources, but still having staff working, even following the guidelines with the mask when we're in close proximity and trying to do the social distance coming out of the holiday season, you know, just susceptible to it spreading a little bit more than even the first time we closed Town Hall. So have a recommendation to close Town Hall to the public to the end of January, and then reassess that the last week of January to see if that needs to be extended, just to kind of get over this this swell of cases here recently. And with that, there would have to be some consideration about employees teleworking, the ones that can. We will have some employees that will still report to the office pretty much on a day-to-day basis. We'll have some that will rotate in, in crews, to help with the social distancing. And then we will have a number of employees that it's not going to be feasible for them to telework. So we would have to figure out if there's any other alternate work we can give them, or there might be some that are idle for a period of time and what that means. We did have those same situations last spring when we closed Town Hall, and Counsel was gracious enough to allow us to work those out the best we could. And so I was asking for the same consideration, and we would try to look at each situation on a case-by-case basis. As you know, the family, I forgot what the FF-CRA stands for, but it was the Family Act that gave what did you say?
I was thinking it was family, was it Family Friendly?
Yeah, Family Friendly, COVID Relief Act. You know, that expired on December 31st, so that bank of leave went away. So we would need to design a leave comparable to that, and we would track that just in case it came back under the new administration, if they decided to do something with that and make it retroactive. However, we would be using a variety of different type of leaves to try to make this thing work the best we can, so. So I leave out anything. But we're just trying to minimize the spread within our employees and the public that we come in contact with.
Okay. So I believe, yes, you're presenting this to ask the Counsel to weigh in on this. We're talking about closing the front doors effective Wednesday of this week and until at least the 31st of January with some further reevaluation within a week of the end date, right?
Yeah, the week of the 25th, we will look at whether to go further. In closing on Wednesday, that will allow tomorrow, when probably a good bit of tax payments will be made before the interest is accrued on those late payments. So that was part of it. And we do, we have had the experience of having drop-off plans and permitting and those type of things. So we've kind of got that system, and we'll work out any kinks we had with that the first time.
Okay. And while I'll mention a little later, sort of in conjunction with this, I was going to ask the Counsel to weigh in on the issue of this body going back to virtual meetings during this period of time, beginning with our next meeting in January and probably lasting until the end of January, and we'll reevaluate that time. But we don't have to consider those necessarily together. But I'd say initially, what is your reaction to the manager's request that he just made as relates to staffing and the closing of Town Hall? Ideas related to that. In many ways, I think it's safe to say this is pretty close to what was proposed during the first round of closings, is that right?
Yeah, for the most part, it's very similar. We might tweak some things just to make it more efficient and better, but it's pretty close.
Okay. Madam Attorney, I don't know if we need to have a formal motion on this, or we can ask Counsel just to sort of weigh in with her comments?
Mr. Mayor?
With respect to compensation for the employees, it's advisable that you take an actual vote on that.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Matthews.
As far as the Planning Department, with all that we've got going on, is that still going to be pretty much operational and no, nothing?
The Planning Department is one of the departments that can function very well, teleworking. What they do is they will assign a planner of the day and have at least one planner here on site to answer phones and any other questions. If by chance somebody did have, you know, just really, really had to come into the building for some reason, they could answer any questions. But it would still function. We would still have public hearings. So as part of your discussion about what to do at Council meetings, we also would need to talk about how we would handle Planning Board, Planning Commission meetings and public hearings. We do have a good plan, we think, in place to handle Council public hearings and using teams and getting everybody on there and getting people on and off the screen, so.
Okay.
So you want to talk about our meetings separately from this issue?
Well, I wanted to deal with this first, but then, yeah, even though they're certainly related. So anybody have a question for the manager?
Thank you.
Mr. Singleton?
One question, Mr. Manager. How many employees have, do we know that has had COVID?
Well, since last March, I believe, March or April, maybe April, 13.
We wish there weren't any, but that's not awful. So, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Singleton, was there anything?
According to Ms. Jones, we need to, if we decide to make a motion about making the staff, similar to last time, make staff whole regardless of the circumstances.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Just before we vote, Mr. Vance, anything? I don't have any questions. Okay. So, yeah, I think at this point it would be proper to take up that issue. I don't know if you want to make a motion or that, Ms. Singleton?
Yes, and regards to that issue, I'm sorry, yes.
I think, Mr. Dellinger may, have you seen?
Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Yeah.
I see you on the screen.
I just think, as we make the motion and consideration, I think we should, in the back of our minds, anticipate potentially having to continue this, the reality of that being for maybe two months after that. So I'm not opposed to it, but I just want it to be realistic in terms of what we're ultimately probably going to end up having to do.
Okay. Very valid point.
I agree, we're probably talking at least, not just January, but I wouldn't be surprised if we're going to at least February, but, yeah.
And I would clarify a couple of things, too. Is, so it is primarily for the public and to provide social distancing for the employees, but there are some things we would still do, like, for example, we have our shows that we're doing, streaming. So we would still try to continue our streaming because we can do that in a way that's safe and still provide that to the public. So we'll provide things like that to the public, just like we normally would have.
Well, I heard that a significant portion of our fire department has been under quarantine either now or relatively recently. So regardless of whether there are actual cases, the impacts of these quarantines are significant on public safety as well, so.
Yeah. And I don't know if, well, don't want to confuse you here, if you can comment on vaccinations in a little bit.
I can tell you what little I know about it right now. Probably get an update later this week.
Okay. Well, let's let the Counsel go ahead and vote on the motion. I believe, did someone second the motion, maybe?
Well, I didn't make the motion, yeah. I mean, that we make our staff whole regardless of the situation for the, under, an undetermined amount of time at this point.
Second.
Okay.
Got it, good.
Second, so I'm a single, then handle Mr. Vance, okay? Ms. Gibson, would you call the roll for a vote on this matter?
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved, and thank you, Mr. Manager. You have your marching orders there. I think it would be of some interest if you can comment briefly about at least what little we know about the vaccinations at this point.
Yeah. So Wake County Public Health is working on the vaccinations, and you know they have a tiered system, the national tiered system about who can get vaccinated and when. So basically, you know, the emergency workers are there, first responders, the medical profession. So our firefighters have been getting vaccines, I think, started last week. Our Police Department will probably be in the second wave or the second tier. And then general employees, you know, like myself and some others, it'll probably be summer before we are in line to get the vaccine. And then there are also some considerations for those over, probably, I think, age 65 that, and plus the ones that have the pre-existing conditions, will be a higher priority. So Wake County is working with various sites and entities, like, I guess, pharmacies, to have locations where they can administer the vaccine in groups. So that's pretty much, I think, all we know right now. At one point, they were going to allow public sites to be vaccination sites, but they've kind of backed away from that. They'd rather for it to be some type of medical-type facility versus just using our gym or community center or something like that. So that's basically it, I think, Matt.
Okay. Go ahead and continue, or did we cover everything with you?
You covered everything that I needed. That was the last thing that I had.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Attorney?
I do not have a report at this time.
Okay, anybody have a question for the attorney? Okay, hearing none. All right, we'll go to Counsel Reports then, and I'll start with Mr. Dellinger.
I don't have anything for this early part of the year.
Wow. Okay, I will go to Mr. Matthews.
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Singleton?
I have an item, but to clarify, we are, we will be meeting virtually at our next few meetings until a change. And you do have a plan, you said, for allowing public hearings to happen?
Yes, I think the mayor was going to have further discussion about that. But yes, we do have, we have some features in teams that we can use to accommodate public hearings that we'll be using.
I have an item, an issue you may laugh at, but I think some of you are aware of it. And I've been asked by several people, the explosion of vultures slash buzzards in the Garner area recently.
On top of the Methodist Church?
On top of the Methodist Church, you're on the top of the towers there, behind, between Arby's, there at the old, the former First Citizen Bank. I rode by there one day, and there were between 30 and 40 of them around the edges, and didn't know what, any thoughts?
My understanding, and I'm going to have to get more information, is that they're protected, and we can't do anything to harm them. Not sure of other methods, but we can contact Wildlife and Wildlife Commission and see if there's any other means.
Well, and I went up in the Town of Bun, which is a very small town. They got permission to fire cannons off because they were up there latching on to buildings, and they get on roofs and they tear them up, you know? They pull it to caulk, and they've also been, not only the Methodist Church, but also the building beside it, the, name of the company there, I cannot think of the name.
Improv Nature?
Yes. They're there also. So people have asked, I know the church has contacted, I think, Department of the Interior, someone's supposed to, have contacted, well, what can and cannot be done? But they're, I mean, it's, they get worse.
I see them every morning, yeah.
I mean, and they're getting on these towers, and so what do you do? I mean, somewhere along the line, if they keep expanding.
I see why they like such an urban area. That's kind of all.
Well, when I remember, stopped last week in Cannon, there were 76 on the Methodist Church roof. That's what they could count, what they could see. So, and like I said, I've been by the former First Citizen's Bank and was trying to count quickly, and it was between 30 and 40. I mean, they were around the whole edge.
Y'all seen them? Building, too.
Yeah. And so that's just, that's something I think we need to think about because I don't think they're going away unless we help them go away. And what you can do, I don't know. And the electrical, I mean, the towers are high, that's exactly what they want to do. The higher, that's what they do. So I don't know if, let's just say Progress Energy, Duke Energy, you know, it's not the first time they've dealt with that. If they do anything, of course, what they can do, say they can go from tower to tower. I don't know if they have anything, but it's just planting that seed out there that I think this is an issue that's not going to go away. And why, again, why do they come out of urban area? I mean, there's not like, there's deer getting killed on Highway 70 out here every night where they're, they can, you know, they're for a food source. So anyway, I just want to put that out there. Been asked about it. I think it's something we're going to have to get guidance from, from whether it's Wildlife or this Department or that Department, whether it's the state or federal level, and see what they suggest. I just want to put it out there.
Okay.
Thank you. And some people call them buzzards or vultures, and I looked it up, and in North America, they're considered the same thing. But in other countries, a vulture is considered a hawk. But anyway, I hadn't figured all that out yet, but I mean, seriously, you want to mind reading, I'll tell you that, it's like, okay. Whatever it is, they're scavengers.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Not to be confused with ravens or crows. Quote the raven nevermore or something, but anyway. Before I get to you two, and I certainly want to recognize you, let me go ahead and just deal with the issue. I think the Counsel needs to weigh in on this. Given what the town manager has suggested in relation to the COVID issue that is much ongoing and actions taken there, I think all of you know that the mayor prefers in-person meetings, but in light of being precautionary when we should, I was going to recommend that the Counsel decide to go back to virtual meetings and not unlike what we did early on in this pandemic, at least for the remainder of this month and possibly to continue on into February and subsequent months, depending on the status of this pandemic. months, depending on the status of this pandemic. So anybody care to make a comment, or I guess we ought to formally vote on this as well? Ms. Attorney? Okay. All right, anybody? Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Mayor, you know, staff's done a great job of social distancing in here, and I think we've handled the situation as far as the council and the key staff very well. And I agree with you, with all that's going on, it's good if we can continue to meet collectively like this, practicing social distancing and doing the right thing. And I'm just speaking for me here, but it appears easier for us to conduct business and as much as we've got going on, if we could still maintain what we're doing, I think that would be beneficial to us as well as getting the business done at the town. And but if it gets totally, or if somebody's got an issue, you know, they must certainly got their right to stay at home. I'm just speaking for me, but as long as we can gather collectively, I think we can get much more accomplished without all of the issues with communications and presentations and some of the things we've had to deal with tonight. And that's just my two cents worth, but I agree with you, I prefer meeting in person.
Well, even though I say that I prefer in person. I am recommending that the council go back to the virtual meetings, at least during this interim period of time, to be reconsidered at the end of the month, anyway.
Don't guess, it's just for me.
Yeah, okay, all right. Anybody else care to comment on that?
Well, I mean, if we're going to close Town Hall and limit the number of people that come in, then that should include us, because staff interacts with, you know, each other on a daily basis. We're like foreign objects coming in here, because we come in here once every week or once every two weeks, and that kind of almost defeats the purpose. So, and we're confined mainly to a couple of rooms, but, and I prefer meeting in person also. However, if we're going to close Town Hall and not allow the public in, then I don't think we should be meeting in here either.
Okay, comments there, any here?
I, again, would agree with my fellow council members, in-person certainly is preferable, but, you know, we're dealing with a lot of unknowns here, and we have to consider other people besides our own personal preferences, so I'm agreeing with virtual meetings.
Okay, Vance?
Yes, I agree with the virtual meetings as well. In fact, it's going to receive the information from Mr. Bridges stating that this Zippo 275 29 has a test positive rate of 12.25 percent, so and it's going up.
Okay, wow. Yeah, I hadn't heard that latest information or hadn't read that yet. Okay, well, I think, yeah, based on the attorney's advice, it's proper to go ahead and make a motion.
Mr. Dillinger.
Oh, excuse me, I keep doing this, I'm sorry. Well, this was under council reports, but yeah, on this, any comments, observation, Mr. Dillinger?
No, I mean, I agree, my preference is to do it in person, it really is, but I think it's a good time to switch back.
Okay.
Yeah.
So will somebody make a motion of that effect?
Some who.
Okay, second. Okay, roll call vote? Mr. Singleton, sorry, Ms. Gibson.
Councilmember Dillinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Vance.
Aye.
Okay, it is so approved, then. Between now and our next meeting, you'll be receiving further information from the staff regarding this, but I think the, what is the online method we used before as teams? Is that what we anticipate before?
Correct, that's correct. We'll have that all set up. And I guess we will need to discuss the Planning Commission, because that's been advertised as an in-person meeting, so how they would transition.
So I don't think we're going to be ready to do, there's 100 percent remote, but their plan for this month, first of all, Planning Commission's moving their meetings starting this month to the second Monday of the month. They had gone to third Mondays for a year and a half or so, so their meeting would be next Monday night, the 11th.
Like it used to be.
Like it used to be. They changed it to try to help one process be better for a while, now it's better to move it to the second one. Last month, they had just the chair, the vice chair, and a staff representative here to do the logistics of the meeting. That was their plan for this month's meeting, and so given that we may not be able to iron out a couple of the details for the remote access for everyone by then, we will likely still operate Planning Commission that same way with a very limited number of people here. All the applicants are going to be online, or most of the applicants will be online, but then we will, we may have the Town Hall open just for any public that needs to attend that, because we may not be able to roll out all the tools for the public to be able to access it by Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. I think we could certainly make that exception since that meeting is coming up just a week from now, and then everything would move to virtual after that date, right?
I think that Mr. Trezenberg would likely take that up with the Planning Commission Chair, and I believe that they would likely follow the, I think they would probably follow the lead of the council. Jeff, is that your understanding?
Yes.
And did I state that accurately about next week's meeting, just that we'll have a very limited number of people here to just to facilitate it as a transition meeting?
Yes, yes, we've already encouraged all applicants to strongly consider doing remote attendance.
Okay. Thank you, thank you both, you're enough. Go back to council reports, Ms. Behringer.
Yes, sir. A few things. I'd like to once again give a shout out to Brittany Washington and the Parks and Rec Department for her achievement and recognition in the, the name of the group escapes me, but I know it is outstanding accomplishments in her field in people under 40. And that has to do with, Ronnie, please?
It's the East Carolina Award. As an East Carolina alum and grad, they do 40 under 40, so 40 individuals under 40 years of age that have made some remarkable accomplishments in their field or represented the school well after they've left and graduated, and so she was named one of the 40 for this year.
That's certainly merits repeating again in public. Second item is that there is a house, and I could not read the house number, but it's in the same block as the G-PAC. It's one of the three houses that if you're going east, they're just after the G-PAC parking lot. I believe it's the second house, but again, I'm not sure because I saw it in passing. The roof is starting to fall, and so we need to have somebody look at that. It's not occupied, but it's starting to fall down on the corner on the right side.
Ms. Behringer, is that between Avery Street and the G-PAC?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then the third thing is that I asked the clerk to provide us all with a copy of the, our meeting rules and procedures that we have worked on from time to time over the years, so that we could all be looking at that and be brought up to date and see if there's any changes that need to be made or anything that we want to expand or expound upon. And that's all.
Okay, I would just comment with the full expectation if things go as planned with our planning retreat, certainly I'd anticipated that would be an item for us to review and discuss, yeah.
I think the last time we reviewed it was, I believe, 2015, so it's time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, council, all committee reports finished. Is there anything else? Yeah, I'm sorry?
Other than.
Oh, I'm always forgetting somebody, almost, Mr. Vance, it's you.
Just two things. In reference to the, this is, I guess, is for the town manager pertaining to the rec center. Can you provide us the status on how that's going?
Sure. The, as you know, the contractor had to hire a third-party roof inspector. That was done, they provided a report and came up with a list of recommendations of things to do to remedy the roof leaks, and right now they're in the process of doing that. They worked as latest today, and they're having to take off some of the infrastructure, the parapet wall and some of the roofing panels, and repair that per engineering specs and per the roof inspectors' recommendations. And that is being monitored by our employee, Al Henderson, and also by the third-party roof inspectors on site. And then there's also been a number of visits by actual manufacturers of some of the systems, and they're looking at and making recommendations for some of that also. So it appears to be going well. Of course, nothing's going as fast as we would like for it to go, but considering the circumstances, they can only take apart what they can put back together and not leak per day. So it's not like they can just rip it all off, they have to monitor the weather and do it in pieces. So it's, I mean, it's coming along. I've been up there on top of the roof a couple of times myself and witnessed the work being done, so.
So I'm scared to ask for a timeline.
We don't have a timeline, but, yeah, I don't even want to say.
Got you, okay.
Yeah.
Understand. We hope it's weeks and not months. So. So do I. One last thing I just want to bring up in reference to what's happening at Amazon, they're still parking trucks on Jones Sausage Road, which I've made a staff aware of. One was seen about 10:30 on January the 2nd. The neighbors are just concerned about the parking periodically and getting a handle on that, making sure it's not happening.
Mr. Vance, was that 10:30 in the morning, 10:30 at night?
At night.
Okay. I've seen the same thing. It wasn't quite 10:30, it was about 9:30, that was one parked. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. If you saw it at 10:30, I hope you were on your way home from work or whatever. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I have one quick question for, I guess, the town manager, Mr. Royal Lance. I know that our consultants had sent out a survey about the parks. When can we expect to get some feedback or know how successful those surveys were, and when will we be presented with the results and public feedback from that?
The surveys are open for comment through the end of this week, so Friday, the 8th. When I checked in before the holidays, we had, I don't remember the exact number, somewhere around 350 responses so far, which we felt really good about. I'm imagining we might have had a few trickle in over the holidays, but we're making one last publicity push this week to try to get the responses. I don't have, I mean, the plan is to consolidate that and bring it back to you, as you suggested, but I don't have an exact date or schedule, but we will be circling back with the consultant soon to figure that out.
That's a great number, it's a great.
Yeah, we were pleased.
Okay, you're good. Just before we adjourn, I want to acknowledge the presence of a couple of our police officers out there. Mr. Benz is here with us, and I want to commend him for the coat drive, maybe it's called something else. Any comments you want to make on that, Joe? I think today was the conclusion of it, is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So they had coats baskets set up all over, and they've been collecting, Captain Smith and Lieutenant McKeever have been collecting coats all week, I think, going to start. So they're going to have a giveaway on MLK on that Saturday of that weekend, so we're setting that up right now, and we're going to disperse those coats, and then anything left over, we will donate to a charity, so.
I believe I saw an email circulating, they were some of the MLK committee is hopefully to come out and help.
Yes, they're partnering with MLK Committee to try to put that on, and any, like I said, and I think Community Hope also is in there as well.
Good.
So we're trying to get those coats out to those that need it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good, good thing you're doing. Okay. Staff, anything else from anybody? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some who.
Second.
Okay, properly made and seconded. Did we decide we need a roll call on that, Ms. Jones?
I believe you can do that by consensus.
Okay, thank you. All right, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
And there is, there are not any nays, so I declare the meeting. This council adjourned. Thank you all, it's been a good productive meeting, and we are heading out at a reasonable time.
Amen.
So see you all virtually for our next meeting then, okay?